We are going to call to order the Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain, and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners for August 22nd, 2019. Thank you all for joining us this morning. We ask that you please mute your cell phones. And for those of you that have the agenda in front of you, we'd like a quick comment on that. We do have a new format. I think it's streamlined quite a bit, but there is a little bit of difference that we want you to be comfortable with. And if you read that first paragraph, you'll see that we actually eliminated the public comment after every single agenda item. You'll have your public comment before and after for non-agendaied items as before. But you're welcome to comment. Just wave your hand, or come on up and sit down, or whatever, and we'll call on you for that item as it comes forward. But we're not going to ask for public comments, so just feel free to do that. You still have all of that freedom to do so. With that, I'm going to ask Judy if you'll lead us in the salute to our flag this morning, if you'll allow us to join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now if you'll join us at a moment of solace, please. Thank you. Lander County Commissioners may begin for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We will begin with our Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. And Art, I'm going to start with you, Commissioner. Do you have anything for our reporting this morning?
No, I sure don't.
Okay. Brian?
I have nothing to report.
Kathy?
I went to the Lepsey meeting, but there was not enough to have the meeting go ahead, so...
No quorum?
No quorum, so it will be rescheduled.
And I have nothing to report.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick things, actually. Lita and Kingston Board were both moved too, so it seems to be the month for switching things around. I did attend the Ponte Esposito Territory Meeting. That was on August 9th, and that's with Travel Nevada, with our Department of Commission and Tourism. If any of you are watching some of our local channels out of Reno, you'll see that we have quite a bit of advertising, actually, for your territory in Battle Mountain, which is Cowboy Territory, and also our Ponte Esposito Territory, which is Highway 50. But we do have ads, kind of like, this is what you get in your backyards to come visit us, and those are showing quite frequently, so that's on target. On the 21st, actually yesterday, I sit on the search committee for Cooperative Extension Educator, and we met and narrowed that down to a few people that we were bringing in, actually two, to do interviews to fill our Lander County position. And this year, they're going to do it a little bit differently. We chose the top two with a third alternate that would be coming in personally, but they're going to do the whole day, and of course, they'll coordinate looking at Battle Mountain naturally, and show them around. But they will also have a community meeting, so that is set for September 16th. And the community will get an opportunity to meet the people that are being interviewed and considered, and get their input. So I thought that was a little bit different, and that was kind of a cool thing to do, so put that on your agenda. Just a couple of things coming up in Austin. One, of course, is our Wine Walk. The Chamber of Commerce puts on for their fundraiser, and that's always a fun one with dinner at the castle, and that's September 14th, and that will be before we have another meeting. And also, one of the exciting things this summer is our military convoy coming through. And that's old military vehicles, World War I, World War II. They're privately owned, but they belong to an association. And this is the 100th year that the first military convoy ever went through the country. And it was the old Lincoln Highway, and it was 1919 that came from Washington, D.C., all the way to San Francisco. So they are honoring that. They left August 11th. They will be in Austin, and we'll be having dinner at the park and using the rodeo grounds, which we approved. And that's on Sunday, September 8th. Then if you get a chance to come on down and introduce yourselves and look at some of these old vehicles. I had asked how many, and they still didn't give me the exact amount, but they thought there was going to be about 40 vehicles and 120 people. And these are all privately owned, but they run, it takes them over a month, and they run about 30 miles an hour. So they go about 150 miles a day. Right. That would be a whole truck in itself, but that's kind of exciting, so I want to be sure and share that with you. Now, staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. I'll call in our county manager.
So I did want to remind the Commission that our next meeting will be September the 19th, so we have just about a little less than a month break before the next meeting. So please make note of that. Yesterday, myself, Commissioner Waits, and Commissioner Ancho, we did meet with Dr. Lyles, the Cooperative Extension State Director. It was a very good meeting, and one of the things we talked about was the bootstraps program, and looking at bringing it back to the county. So that's a real positive thing. We talked about the process and the new cooperative extension educator, once he gets in. So I think that's on a good course, and hopefully, we'll get our bootstraps program going back and work well together with the cooperative extension program. We continue to make the improvements in Austin on the TV system in Austin, and it's coming along nicely. Coming up into the 21st century, so I hope that everything, I'm hoping there's no complaints from the folks in Austin over the TV system that we're working on down there. J U B is here. I had some airport stuff, but they're going to get that update here shortly. I'd like to remind you of the correction on number nine, Commissioner. And then afterwards, I do have some updates on a few things that we need to go into litigation to close the meeting to discuss those. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now open for public comment. This is for non-agenda items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at any board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment this morning?
We actually do. Kind of an oddity, I'm going to make a public comment. So normally, I would not address this. I would, I don't pay much attention to it, but it bothered me enough to make this statement. So, and I'm not a fan of Facebook, so the comments that have been flying out there on Facebook about the county and unfair hiring practices. And one of the things I want to say is just because you don't like the outcome of who we hire does not mean there was cynical behavior behind it. And so to those of you who in the public think that we're doing something cynical behind the lines, that's not true. We have an ethical line that we have to follow, and as a county, we're doing that. And when we hire people, we hire people because of their own fruition. And the, whether it be the training, or the years of service, or whatever they have, that's how we're hiring people, and I want to put out there that there's not these dark tunnels of how we do hiring practices. And I would hope that we, at some point, can be a strong enough county that we can trust the people in here doing the job, and that we're doing the best we can, and we have moral compasses, and I have a moral compass, and I strongly hold to that. And so, without getting too pinpoint on that, I just wanted to make sure that I made that statement because the people that we do hire, we're doing it the right way. We're not trying to be hiding behind doors. So, and if they have questions, then they should come out and ask the questions instead of posting things on Facebook, so then they start a big uproar, and nobody knows what the heck they're talking about. So I'll leave it at that. So, all right?
Got it. Any other public comment? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of August 22nd, 2019 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of April 1st, 2019 Special Meeting Budget Workshop Minutes. Number three, approval of April 11th, 2019 Minutes. Number four, approval of April 25th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number five, approval of May 9th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number six, approval of May 23rd, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number seven, approval of June 27th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number eight, approval of July 11th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number nine, approval of July 25th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number 10, approval of August 8th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. And number 11, approval of the payment of bills. Okay, with that, I do need to pull out number one, the Agenda Notice, and number 11, approval of payment of bills. We did receive, number two, the approval of April 1st. We did receive the Special Meeting Budget Workshop Minutes, and we haven't received 3 through 10. So with that, let me first address number one. We do have a correction, and we do need to amend number nine. Under the county manager, for possible action to approve the map route for Nevada, and it should read Coalition for Suicide Prevention Annual 5K Walk Run scheduled for September 14th, 2019. So with that, we need to amend that and put in the proper wording for that coalition. And so, let's see. We have a motion to approve the amended Agenda Notice.
So moved.
And number two.
Okay, I'll approve. The amended Agenda Notice, August 22nd, 2019, and the approval of April 1st, 2019 Special Meeting Budget Workshop Minutes.
That's okay. Thank you, Judy made the motion. Kathy seconded that. We all clear on that one? Okay. All approving.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that passes, and then we go down to number 11, approval of payment of bills. We have a couple we need to pull out. And one of them is one for Commissioner Allen, and it's check number 204267. And then we need to pull out a couple for Commissioner Sparks, 204399 and 204296. So with those three out, could I have a motion that we approve the rest of the bills?
So moved.
I'll make the motion. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion. Judy seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, abstain? Oh, sorry.
No, no.
Yeah, sorry.
You're fine.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Now, for Commissioner Allen, we need to vote on check number 204267.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion. Brian seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, abstain.
Thank you. Judy abstains. And the next one is for Commissioner Sparks, 204399 and 204296.
Make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion, and Judy seconded those. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Commissioner Sparks abstained. Thank you. That takes care of the consent agenda. We are now going to recess the Board of Lander County Commissioners and convene the meeting of Lander County Liquor Board, composed of the Lander County Board of Commissioners and the Lander County Sheriff. Number one, Sheriff, for possible action to approve or disapprove a liquor license for the Silver State Bar and Grill in Austin, Nevada.
Good morning. I want to go through the record. My office has done all the research on this. It's on and off, and we're ready to go on.
I do have a question. What happens, like, we just approved for another party for the Silver State Bar and Grill. What happens, what happens to that license? Is that terminated?
That was Tipp and Bees. And being as they closed it down, they know they no longer have it. So gentleman had had it before, and he reapplied, and this is what this is.
Right. But I wasn't sure how you do that. Who notifies you when it terminates, or on the old one?
I believe so. Am I correct? Yes.
Great. Thank you. And this is for on and off?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve a liquor license for the Silver State Bar and Grill in Austin, Nevada.
That's okay. Thank you. Judy made the motion, and Kathy has seconded that. And so we have a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will adjourn the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board and reconvene the meeting of the Lander County Board of Commissioners. We are on agenda item number two, which is our clerk. For possible action to approve or disapprove the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Cybersecurity, and Infrastructure Security Agency's Assessment Rules of Engagement. And I certainly hope you can enlighten us. I read it all and am really confused, but I know it's something we have to do, right?
Yeah. Sadie Solomon, Lander County Clerk, to be honest with you, I had, when Peggy had emailed this out, there was the two contacts for you to, actually, it did not go to the Commissioners, from the looks of it, Ted, Liz, Karina, and Keith. And so there was two contact people for you to ask questions on, but it looks like it didn't go to you. So this is way over my head. I know all counties have to have it. Some have already had it approved, so they're waiting for a couple stragglers of people from the counties. So I don't know if Ted was able to review this or not.
Well, Noah sent to our legal staff a couple of weeks ago. Did you have a chance to go over it?
Oh, no. I reviewed it, and it's a typical, I mean, it states what it is.
Government contract?
Yes.
Okay. Then my question is, who fills in all these little blanks? Do we fill these in before we send it back?
Yep.
Sadie, you get to fill in all this? Like, this applies to blank, and all those things in there?
Correct. And any questions I may have, then I can contact Abdul. At the Secretary States on any of those, filling in those blanks, to make sure we have it done properly.
Well, one asks, I know, for our technical point of contact. Who are we referring it to?
That would be Brian.
Brian?
Correct. Two PC performance.
And the distribution list, that's set up already?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's something we have to do. It's interesting that it's for our approval or disapproval. Should I just not say for our approval? Do we not have a say in it?
Well, yeah. Sorry, Sadie.
Okay.
You have the authority to disapprove it. However, this is one of the avenues that we would use in the event of federal funding or federal grants.
Yes, you have to do it if you want federal money.
Yes. So what, and...
So that would affect our FAA grants?
It possibly could, yes, because it's all federal grants. That's a good point, Commissioner, yes.
They got you painted in a corner there, Brian.
But it's your decision.
So if we have a cybersecurity issue, the federal government will come in and straighten it out?
No.
No.
That's not exactly what it says.
No. Because with the thing that, with the attack they had in the 23 counties in Texas, and they stole all their data, all their information, and it cost 17 million to get it back, that causes someone to think about how prepared we are here.
Okay.
So one of the things that I need to update you on is our security system here in this building, and what security system measures we have in place to prevent that type of hacking. One of the things in place is called, it's called Hike, or Hike software, which is not recognized by the federal government. It failed to test several years back. We're not even supposed to have it in our security system. We do. If we maintain that, it's called Hike, like I said, if we maintain that software, and the federal government was to come in and look at that software and say, you guys have this software, we're not going to honor any security. We're not going to even allow you to access federal grants. So this is directly related to that, in the sense of the software that we use for security purposes, what software we use and how we use it. I don't know if that answered your question.
Why do we have software that's not approved?
I would get into great detail. Go ahead.
We were snookered by a company who's now out of business. We were taken to the cleaners for hundreds of thousands of jobs. And we're going to talk about it at length in the litigation meeting today. But that's the long and the short of it. We were given outdated and outmoded software, including this. We were given cameras that didn't function, can't function, won't function, will never function. And that's just some of it. So we'll discuss that at length.
Okay. Back to the actual motion. So we need a motion that we have to accept this, and we want... With signature?
We have your name typed on it, Patsy, for the chair, if that's okay. It's what the Board desires or legal prefers.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Cybersecurity, and Infrastructure Security Agency's Assessment Rules of Engagement, and authorize the chair to sign. One second.
Judy made the motion. Kathy seconded it. Any other comments from the Board? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay? Okay. One nay, so we can, thank you. We move to number three. County Manager, for possible action to reappoint one individual to serve on the Lander County Advisory Board to manage wildlife. The term expires on June 30th, 2022. And Scott has stepped forward and put his name in for us for consideration again. We always appreciate our volunteers that stay with us and add so much to our advisory boards.
I'll make a motion to put Scott in there. One second.
Thank you. Art made the motion, and Brian seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that passes. Moving to number four. County Manager, the Agenda Setting Procedures Discussion Only.
So with the new format on our agenda, what we do at our Agenda Setting now is Mondays, I'll sit down and I'll come up with a draft agenda. That, I will look at all of the agenda requests that come to my office. They're timestamped, and then put in a file by my secretary. Those are reviewed and put on the agenda in the proper format. Once that's done, that draft agenda is sent out for review. I'll usually get with Liz, just as an overview of it, to look at it real quick, to double-check everything before it goes up to the District Attorney's Office for final review. So once we get to the point where we put a draft together, it's sent to the Chair and the Vice Chair, Commissioner Waits and Commissioner Ancho, for review. It's sent to the Clerk's Office for review as well. Once, and we give a timeframe, we ask that it be back within 24 hours. Once it comes back, will we make any changes or not? And then it's sent up to the District Attorney for review. Or I'll go and sit down and have a face-to-face with Ted, and we'll discuss the items and the wording procedures and so forth, and then it is put out for publication. Books are built. We streamlined it quite a bit. We, our goal here is to have the Commissioners there booked by Friday midday to, no later than 5:00 o'clock, so that you have a weekend to review, call with any questions, and have streamlined, smoother meetings.
Why the change in the format?
So Patsy and I went last, two weeks ago, and we met with Pool Pact, Wayne Carlson. And these were the recommendations in Pool Pact, as well as a seminar that was attended last year at a NACO conference, the recommendations of presentation put on by the Supreme Court, related to agendas, open meetings, and so forth.
And when you talk about agenda requests that are put into a file, and you review them, and determine which, what goes on the agenda, what basis do you use for that to decide what goes on the agenda and what doesn't?
I did not say I determine if they go on, I said they're reviewed and put on an agenda in proper format. We do not take, I don't take anything off of the agenda. That is a decision of the Chair or the Vice Chair, if they want to take something off of the agenda. That's not my decision. Everything that I receive is put on an agenda. I have never taken anything off of an agenda.
I don't have any questions.
Neither do I.
Just wanted to give you an update on the process. And I've coordinated with Sadie on this, as well as Ted and Chair and the Vice Chair.
You know, if you're looking for a product that's going to be perfect, the only way we're going to get an agenda and other paperwork that's perfect is by longevity. The school board had people that spent their whole career there. And you get a packet for your school board meetings, they're picture-perfect. But that's because you have 20 and 30 and 15 years' experience doing the same thing. If we have people for 10 years, yeah, our paperwork will be perfect, but we just don't have that luxury, it seems.
Okay. Any other concerns on the Agenda Setting? And we have changed it over a period of time. There was a time when everybody used to sit down at the table and mull things over and everything, but we are again trying to streamline as long as we have the input and we're handling it properly. It should be all okay. Okay. If there's any other questions, we'll move to number five. County Manager, request from John Gist for possible action to approve or disapprove of $4,644 for the high school band uniforms for the Battle Mountain High School Band. We had this on for discussion, and Mr. Gist was going to take a look at everything and see what he could do and bring back to us, and so this is what they have chosen, and this is the amount.
If you need to call in.
Oh, okay. He's also available by phone if we have any questions and want to call him. So we'll see if we have any questions. And the only thing I was going to say, I was absolutely appalled the first time this came before us, and I realized we didn't have band uniforms. I just don't know if a school didn't have band uniforms, even, gee, and I went to a much, much smaller school, but we had hand-me-downs, but we had band uniforms. I'm going, this is really exciting to think we're finally going to come in and give these folks something to be proud of and represent us. So the only suggestion I had was, maybe we just move it up to an even amount of 5,000. If you want to take a look at that, and we'll give them a little bit more to buy a couple exchange uniforms and a couple exercises, because this is going to be for longevity, I'm sure.
Yes. And I, just so everyone knows, is I was the one that brought this to begin with. I didn't do it the right way, but I did bring it in front of, because I had requested that they represent us in the Nevada Day Parade. And so that's how this whole chain of events happened, is... And so that's how this whole chain of events happened is because they have done such a beautiful job, and I thought that they would represent us so nicely in the celebration that I requested them to. And and with that being said, they needed uniforms, so.
So my question is why why the school can't provide for them?
Oh, yeah.
Is why the school couldn't provide for them. I know you can't answer that. It's I I'm not opposed to it. It's just the school is a separate entity.
Well, I truly don't understand, but the bottom line is they haven't, and they haven't so far. So we get the opportunity to step up. And I don't necessarily think it was our position to do that either. I I don't understand. But it's here, and like Kathy said, we did ask them to represent our county in the parade, and certainly would be nice to have them in uniform. So I think it's a small thing that we can do for them, and I'm I'm excited.
And anymore with the uniforms and things like that, the majority of the clothing the kids have to pay for themselves, those things aren't supplied to them like they used to be because the budget can't, their budget can't afford to pay for these kinds of things. And they do budget just like we do, and this would have been a cost that wasn't budgeted in and or requested, or requested. But I just think that they don't they don't pay for any of that kind of thing, those things anymore, so.
Yeah. I understand all that, Kathy. I I just I know that, you know, Lander County's kind of in a little bit different financial situation than than most schools, and I know the school does receive funding. So I, like I said, I'm not arguing for this. I just wanted to to point it out that I still feel it should be a school thing. I want to be very cautious from the commissioner's standpoint when we are approving things like this, that we don't make a big habit of it because other people do have responsibilities as well.
Well, I know, and I agree, but it was I was the one that stepped in it to begin with and requested them, you know, before I checked anything out, requested them to represent us. And so that's where the ball got started, was by me as a county commissioner, asking them to represent us in Carson City.
And that's the key, they're representing Lander County.
Yeah, they're representing us, yes. They're representing us, and so.
Well, I will make the motion to approve up to five thousand dollars for the high school band uniforms for the Battle Mountain High School Band.
One second.
Thank you. Judy made the motion. Kathy seconded it.
Although I have a question, Ted, actually, as written, like it is specific.
It is specific, and we took out the language and all other matters probably related there, too. I do not believe we can go any other figure except what's stated there.
That's what I was thinking.
So I will I will amend that to say.
And that's the problem with getting rid of that language. You can't fudge a little bit anymore.
Right, and and I was looking at that. So, yeah, I will amend that to state four thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Okay, one second.
Thank you. Judy made the motion. Kathy seconded it. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so they will have their uniforms. Moving to number six. County manager for possible action renewal of Lisa Frontier Community Action Agency located at three seven zero South Mountain Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight nine eight two oh, for another two years.
The contract has been reviewed by the district attorney's office. There are no changes to the contract other than the dates. Everything else stays.
And I have the original here.
Okay, so the dates would be October first, two thousand nineteen, to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And we do need the chair to sign. This is a motion.
Pass, or moved?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that passes.
And Judy, can you go ahead and take all without order?
We are at number seven right now. No, we're okay.
Okay.
We're fine. Thank you, Kathy. County manager for possible action to submit letter of support for the proposed expansion at Cortez Mine Site. We go back to our county manager, who actually requested the letter. Did they request it?
Yes, they did.
Is this in your packet?
Yes.
Do you have a chance to review it and see if you wanted to make any changes or if you're okay with that?
I'll make a motion. We submit a letter of support for the proposed expansion at the Cortez Mine Site and authorize our county manager to sign.
One second.
Thank you. Judy made the motion. Kathy seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that one passes. And we move to the county manager again for possible action to ratify the appointment of Chance Ellis as the Town of Kingston Fire Company Fire Chief. And he was appointed by the Kingston Board, and that that was done last May. And that is in your packet, so it's just up to us to ratify that.
Make a motion. We ratify the appointment of Chance Ellis as the Town of Kingston Fire Company Fire Chief.
One second.
Thank you. Judy made the motion. Kathy seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and that passes. And we move to number nine. County manager for possible action to approve the mapped route for Nevada Coalition for Suicide Prevention Annual Five-K Walk Run, scheduled for September fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And actually, they couldn't be here today, so that was brought before by our county manager. If you take a look at the map and see if you have any any questions or anything on it. This is their annual event.
I'll make a motion. We approve the mapped route for Nevada Coalition for Suicide Prevention Annual Five-K Walk Run, scheduled for September fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
One second.
Thank you. Do we need to sign that? Just to prove that I guess.
Here's Mr. Cleveland.
Judy made the motion. Kathy seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that passes. And we move to number ten. Convention and Tourism. For possible action to read into the record a proclamation in support of the twentieth year of the Human Powered Bike Race, held annually in Lander County.
Paula Tumore, Director for Lander County Convention and Tourism.
Thank you, Paula. So, and we did have the second page, which actually also finishes that up for us. Did everyone get the copy?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we do, and we do have to read it into the record on the motion.
All right, I will make a motion, and we approve the proclamation number two thousand nineteen dash zero one. Proclamation for recognition for the Lander County Commission for the twentieth World Human Powered Speed Challenge. Whereas Battle Mountain, Nevada, is the location of the twentieth anniversary World Human Powered Speed Challenge that brings the world's fastest bicycles and riders into international competition, September eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. And whereas the Human Powered Speed Challenge presents an opportunity to set a world record on State Route three oh five to south of Battle Mountain, which possesses the unique traits necessary for those highly engineered bicycles to achieve top speeds. Whereas the Human Powered Speed Challenge represents the world's fastest human propelled by self-powered power in the most efficient vehicle of its kind ever designed. And whereas the World Human Powered Speed Challenge unites maximum athletic power and high-level aerodynamic and engineering to produce shockingly fast speeds that in two thousand sixteen was a record-breaking eighty-nine point five nine miles per hour. Whereas the Lander County Convention and Tourism Authority and IHPVA has worked for many years to bring this existing event to the community in keeping with Nevada's dedication to promoting and welcoming outdoor adventure and recreation as an important contributor to its tourism-based economy. Therefore, the Lander County Commission does hereby recognize and extend to the Lander County Convention and Tourism and the International Human Powered Vehicle Association our deepest appreciation for the great and successful achievement of your twentieth anniversary of the Human Powered Speed Challenge held here in Battle Mountain, Nevada, passed and adopted this twenty-second day of August, two thousand and nineteen.
One second.
And authorize.
And authorize the chair to sign.
All second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And look now, we're going to break for ten minutes. Yeah, I know it's. Number eleven. Thank you. J U B Engineer, update on FAA projects within Lander County Sash and provisional only. Tell them what you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
I'm Tom, the manager from J U B in Boise.
David Meyer for the record.
We've got a couple of projects we want to go over that were under contract to design for FY nineteen, or actually, right now, and to be constructed in two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Let me just interrupt, whoops, for a moment. How often are you on?
We're here.
Thank you.
So one project is at Battle Mountain. It's probably the larger of the two, although both of them are pretty good-sized projects. So the one at Battle Mountain is on the picture here on these kind of funky colors. The blue and the green represent pavement that exists that we're going to rehabilitate. And then the pink is going to be an expansion of the apron to the west of about a hundred feet by two hundred and fifteen feet north and south. And then the rehab area is seven hundred and forty feet in length, the blue and the green, and about two hundred and fifteen feet north and south. So I kind of want to show you the layout of it first. We're also going to rotemil the surfaces of the rehab areas, the blue and the green. So that would give us some rotemilled, like gravelled shoulders that we put in all around these colors. And then in addition to that, we are going to, just to talk about the configuration a little bit, stay away from these radiuses and the taxiways down here as much as we can. We we're going to have to do something down in this end, the west end, coming off of taxiway C. The reason we're trying to stay away from that is to cut back on the cost a little bit. And the FAA right now wants a whole lot of fancy fillets on those radiuses now, like kind of like this, but on speed for this one. So we're trying to stay away from that because that dries up the cost. Doesn't really do us any good down on that taxiway right now, and it gets into a lot of electrical and the edge light work. So the loading capacity that we anticipate for the ramp, we kind of got the FAA involved in. Well, the BLM uses that GA, which is a general aviation apron over there, and there's a lot of bleed over during the fire season. So is it possible, could we get that thing a little bit thicker to handle the bigger aircraft, not just the general aviation airport aircraft, but the bigger aircraft as well? And they kind of bid on that and approved it. So that was a good thing. So the capacity is going to be for aircraft up to one hundred and fifty-five thousand pounds, which is about as big as BLM can throw at you. So I thought that was a real good thing. The thing about it is it raises the cost of the total work because we have to go a little bit deeper, a little bit more asphalt. But frost susceptibility and frost considerations means that we have to go down twenty-four total inches anyway. So according to FAA criteria. So a couple of things have driven us into a reconstruction of the green and the blue in lieu of overlay or taking the asphalt off and working the aggregates from the top. So and one of the things is when the testing came or the geotech came through for the cores that they took out of the apron, it showed that the base aggregates that exist are infiltrated. They're too fine. They have too many fines in there to resist frost. Although they seem to be doing pretty well over the years, it doesn't make FAA criteria. So we've got to dig down for that twenty-four inches through those aggregates anyway, and yet the aggregates aren't reusable. So we're going to have to bring in, actually, we're going to bring in fifteen inches of aggregate, both base and subbase, and then nine inches of asphalt on top of that. The nine inches is a little extra, and that's for that heavier loading type of scenario. So that's kind of driving up the cost a little bit. The cost, because of the size of the area and the fact that we are reconstructing it, is up above three million dollars, of which about one hundred and ninety-two thousand is you guys' share. And that's not counting any share that the state can throw in. They usually throw in some kind of wild card amount, depending on how big it is. It's not a set amount. So that's what we apply for. If you remember, about nine months ago, it was a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and we're holding that. The only thing is now FAA is thinking, well, we don't quite have that much money, even though we've designed and are in the midst of designing it all. They they're talking about two million dollars. Well, you know, it it's going to depend, I think, a lot on how good a bids we get. When we open the bids, if we get really good bids and say it's two and a half million, I think they're going to come up with the money. If we open them up and it's four and a half million, you know, they're probably going to stick with their two million. So they wanted us to divide it, and we were going to do it anyway, into schedules. Schedules are areas of pavement that are set aside for funding capability to split the project up in case something happens during the bid opening that we can cut the project back. So right now, for the full package, the blue area would be schedule one because it's our highest priority. The green is schedule two, and then the expansion is schedule three. If they do come up with two million dollars, it really meets the amount of money that that we've got in our estimate for the blue area and the pink area. And the beauty of that is we get the expansion done, and it forces the FAA to finish the project next year, which I think they're going to do anyway if they don't come up with all the money, especially if we surrounded the asphalt that's not done by stuff that is done. So that's kind of our strategy, and it seems to to match our cost estimate as well. Phases of a project are talking about how do you divide the project up such that the airport can work operationally the best it can? So there's two phases in the full package that we've come up with, and this has all been worked out with the BLM out there and the FBO out there because we presented that early on. So we're going to split the project right down the line between the green and the blue, and we would work this end first, and then this would take the GA traffic and maybe some BLM bleed over, but mostly probably GA aircraft, while BLM works down here in their home base that they have anyway that's set up for them. And then after that, we would open up this area to construction. This would be opened up for traffic and BLM, and GA would have this entire amount of footage of of apron. One of the beauties of the addition here, I forgot to tell you, lines up well. Right now, this taxiway curls around and grabs this down here. It's kind of untenable to provide for this straight-on approach. And also, the next thing we need to talk about is the tie-downs configuration. We've reconfigured the tie-downs because the existing tie-downs are too close together for FAA regs again, and that's okay because we don't see a whole lot, maybe more than ten GA aircraft out there one time. The big thing is out there is the BLM bleed over of those aircraft into this area. So we've we've provided separation for the larger aircraft to come through the south and take any of these taxiways. We've also lined up these taxi lanes where they can catch hangar taxi lanes that are on the ALP that could be eventually built through these hangars and surrounding this hangar that we built last year and whatnot. So it's set up for that, but instead of twenty-seven tie-downs that are out there now, there would be seventeen. And there are larger ones for the larger aircraft, so they suit both the small and the large. And even though we've reduced it, we don't think that's going to be a big thing because we don't see that many GA aircraft out there. But we do see a lot of BLM aircraft, and they can still park in here. And they're probably not going to be tied down anyway typically. So that's the tie-down configuration. Again, we've coordinated that with both BLM and the FAA. So that's the tie-down configuration. Again, we've coordinated that with both BLM and the FBO. And, um, and then the last thing, uh, that we have, we, the, the amount of time that it's gonna take to build the project is probably three and a half to four and a half months. It's, it's a big endeavor, 'cause we're digging down and we're putting new stuff in, and the area's large. So we're gonna try to get out there as early as we can. Next year would be the time this thing would be built. And the only problem is about getting out there early, is FAA has not been real good about cutting their grants until later in the summer, which is, had been a pain for us for several years at airports. But hopefully, this year will be different, or next year will be different. We can get the grant early, we can get some of this work done, especially the blue area, um, before the fire season starts. So BLM has some room for, if the fire season is tough, then they can park some aircraft over there as well. So. That's all I had on the apron area.
No questions. Do you turn the map background?
Yeah.
So on the tie-downs, there was twenty-seven, it'd go to seventeen. So when those twenty-seven were initially put in, was it part of a F federal money that we built those with, and now they don't meet federal guidelines?
I'm assuming so. I'm assuming so, but you know, the regs change.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was twenty-plus years ago that this apron was done.
Yeah.
The FAA changes as often as they can, so it may be, and this is, uh, this is actually the current configuration. You can see these are close together. This is actually, this apron opens to the south, or this, uh, hangar opens to the south. Planes parking here can be in the way. We tried, you know, all of these are supposed to be future taxi lanes. All that had to be taken into consideration.
Yeah, it's the separation between the tie-downs that they're changing a lot.
Okay.
And we're trying to get some bigger passage-throughs, I guess you'd say, for the bigger aircraft as well, so.
Yeah, that way it can be compatible with GA aircraft, your single-engine air tankers, which are your kinda medium-sized aircraft, and then heavy aircraft as well. So. Any other questions on Battle Mountain?
On, yeah, on the apron project.
Tom, can you go over the, uh, airport, the twelve-thirty runway and wind machine that you worked on?
Yeah, we can talk about that too. Um, and I guess we can talk about that now. We've, we've s- s- uh, tried to find a, a different, uh, wind machine, uh, than what's running at the AWAS, 'cause we just can't get the right numbers to, um, to prove that, uh, that the existing three-two-one doesn't have enough, uh, has all the coverage that's needed out there. What we're trying to prove is that it doesn't. That we need that crosswind runway. That's a big deal for you guys. BLM uses that a lot in the summer. And everybody knows that there's a lot of crosswind out there, but we can't get NOAA data to work. We can't get the AWAS data to work. So we're trying to find another machine out there, and I've, um, been talking to MET ONE that has a sonic machine that does wind direction and, and speed. Uh, and actually plots the windrows and this kinda thing, the data that we need. And something that we could place closer to twelve-thirty, the crosswind runway, um, on a tripod. And, um, so we're talking to them about, um, uh, the sonic machine, and it's sixty-three-hundred base. And if we want a solar addition to, I think it's another thousand dollars. Um, so we, we're looking into that as, you know, an alternative to the data that we've got, so we can get some data that would prove to the FAA, look, we do have this crosswind problem, um, and we need to update that runway twelve-thirty, 'cause it's, it's usable now, but in a couple of years, it's gonna start throwing rock and, uh, have some aggregates on the surface. And aggregates and airplanes don't go to, together very well, so.
I thought we were going to try and, and get this information from earlier this year.
Well, I had trouble getting this MET ONE to give me to react, and finally, they gave me a cost here a couple of weeks ago, so.
So, is it something we can still do this summer?
Uh, I think so. You know, I mean, it's, we got to work out some bugs, how we wanna do it. They just send the parts out. So, you know, it's, they don't send anybody with them unless you pay them, which is ridiculous, but, uh, so we're kinda working with the county on maybe somebody that can help set this thing up. And I don't think it's nuclear science, but it's, takes somebody with some electrical and mechanical knowledge, so we're still working out the details on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, let's start on the side. So our other twenty-nineteen FAA project in Lander County is down at the Austin Airport. Um, we, we talked about this in May. Um, the idea is to take this current gravel road and pave it from State Highway seven-twenty-two all the way into the airport. We drove that road yesterday. It'll be nice when it's paved. It's in great condition, but it's a bumpy road, as gravel roads tend to be. Um, so we have, we've discussed this a lot with the Austin Airport Board to get their feedback, which has been really helpful. We've also reached out to NDOT, because we're gonna have to do some tie-ins into State Highway seven-twenty-two. I actually just heard back from the NDOT right-of-way engineer this morning, saying, I don't see any major issues with it. We need to look at some construction sign spacing, but other than that, uh, didn't see any real concerns. So, um, the other thing we're gonna try to do, uh, through this project, especially with FAA funding, is, uh, to reestablish and, uh, rehabilitate this secondary access down here. This is an old airport access that was cut off, uh, back when the crosswind was still in use, because it tied into a parallel taxiway, which is not advised. Now that that crosswind's no longer used, uh, this is actually a good, uh, secondary access, because it will tie into our eventual hangar area and, uh, give hangar owners a second access point. Also, in the event there's ever issues with the gate, the existing, or if you ever have an accident at the gate and you can't get in, it's always good to have a second access. So, uh, the plan is to clear that road up, put in a cattle guard on the highway side, and a manual swing gate on the airport side to provide the level of security the FAA requires. Um, and then once the project's done, all of that'll just be left in place. So, one of the things we've been talking with the airport board a lot with is what to do right at the inside of the gate. Um, you know, it was always the plan to establish parking here. This is where it already is. So we wanted to expand this into a paved parking lot. Um, the other thing we need is access to the apron, because it's an EMS airport. It's important that the EMS people can get to the apron at a safe spot. Uh, they already accessed the apron at this location here. The problem is, it's all gravel. So when they access the apron, they drag a bunch of gravel on there, which creates hazards for planes. By paving that, we can keep the, the tracking down, uh, keep the airfield a little safer. And then, uh, one of the, one of the feedbacks that we got from the airport was, it'd be nice with this extra space out here along this turn, if we can put a few more parking spots for transient parking, especially, uh, for the fly-in, stuff like that, where people will come down. It's just good to keep people from just parking all over. So, um, that's the plan now. We're moving forward with that. We got our construction safety plans for both projects submitted to the FAA last week. Um, and the design report submitted this week. We're expecting to have plans and specifications for their review in the coming weeks. So we're moving forward.
Any questions on either project?
Sounds good.
What's your timeframe on that one?
So this'll be another one that's designed this year and constructed next year, uh, based on how FAA has set up the grants. This is a design-only grant. Um, we're, we're a little more flexible on timeframe. We're expecting this to be a four-week construction, uh, so we're probably gonna go, uh, September. Uh, if we can get it earlier, we'll try to do as early as we can, 'cause it'd be nice to have this paved, uh, before the fly-in in twenty-twenty. So, might as well put some new asphalt down for all the people coming in to see, so.
You're so positive. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, there's no other questions. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Appreciate the update. You travel safely on your way home. Number twelve on the agenda is our building department for possible action use of portable storage units, such as the seat containers and conics boxes. Good morning, Anna.
Good morning, Anna Penola with the Building Department. So this is language that needs to go into the code for an exemption, and I'm just bringing it forward to you for you guys to accept.
So basically, we're talking just conicses, right?
And seat containers, yeah.
And seat containers. What about, like, the buildings that they sell over here at Hany's? These pre-engineered buildings that people can pick up, drop down, and they can be moved from location to code? Why did, I mean, why do those need to be permitted? Based on our, our current code, you know? I'm just looking for some logical answer to it, 'cause I don't think they should, but.
It's a structure, and anything under two hundred square feet doesn't, but anything from two hundred to four hundred can stay on split skids. Anything over four hundred to six hundred has to be on a, uh, fro- unfrosted protected foundation. Anything over six has to be on a frosted protected foundation.
And what is the reason for that? Other than that our code states it. I, I'm just looking for some, I just.
Foundations have to be below the frost line for cracking and things like that. But because of the size of four to six, I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, does it pose a safety i- issue? I mean, I just, I'm looking at it as, if, if I'm a person who wants to go buy a, a movable building that's not permanent, I don't understand why I would have to buy a permit to do it. If these buildings are already pre-engineered, they're already built. I just, I don't get that.
It's a, it's just a structure. And I, you guys probably saw this, but the, however you guys decide, it's not for garages or poor old buildings or carports. I mean, it's just for storage. It's, the intended use is storage.
So you wanna store animals in them, you wanna store a car in them?
A car, and you have a old car that you keep, but not in and out every day?
Like a garage. You don't wanna utilize them as far as.
Yeah, so why, why would we have that verbiage? If it's my seat containers and my car, and I wanna drive it in and out every day, why?
Then it's a garage, and it's, falls under different rules.
You can have a trailer to put your car in and pull it in and out every day.
Well, exactly. So that's what I'm just saying. It's just, it just, and I'm not backing on you, Anna, 'cause I know this is what our code states. I'm just trying to make some sense to it to where... It just doesn't make sense to me, you know? I wanna buy a, a, a building that's pre-engineered. I wanna set it on my property, and I wanna drive my car in and out it every day. I should be able to do that.
But then, then you have a garage.
Per what the ordinance states, correct?
The intended use of the code, yes. I don't have any answers, Brian. I don't know. I'm sorry.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's my, that's, that's my, that's what I'm trying to say. It's like.
But it's also revenue for the county.
I think that's how it was, oh, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry. I think that's how it was generated to begin with, as far as the revenue for the county.
Well, that's the point. It's like, to create a revenue stream, we're infringing on the rights of people. That's, that's how I feel about it. And that's why I think it's kinda nonsense. And that's my opinion, and I'm just stating my opinion. But that's what we do, is we, we set the policy, and I'm just saying, I'm just arguing the point. If you wanna do my building, you wanna set it on your thing, you know?
So.
Because, yes.
I'm sorry, Brian. First of all, you know, there's really, there's no backup describing any of this. Is sit there and saying, you know, verbiage to exclude it is, you know, I totally agree with Brian. Um, our code doesn't, doesn't address these issues right now, and. Our code does. Then it should've been in here. Well, then I can bring the IRC for you. That's, that's a big book for backup. Well, is, basically, what's it, it's stating that these need foundations, correct? And you are requesting that we exempt them from those requirements. I don't understand what you're asking here, Anna. You guys voted on seat containers and cargo containers not to be permitted. I have to put this language in for exemption, 'cause there are a lot of exemptions for the code to afford to be put in, so. But what I'm saying is, is it's not saying anything. It's, it's for possible action use of portable storage units. Is, what are we acting on? We need, are we, we are exempting them from. Permits. Permits. And so, basically, I'm with Brian. You get a seat tainer, you get a stor- a container is... I wanna be able to do what I want with it, 'cause none of the county's business. So if, if that's how the motion plays out, I'll make that motion. But I wanna be clear on what, you know, this whole discussion is all about.
What, what's the motion?
Uh, yeah.
I didn't make one. I'm just saying.
So you're, I'm, so I'm getting my mouth, I got myself confused. So all you're asking is that we change the verbiage to what?
I have to add this verbiage, 'cause the.
For non-exempt, okay.
To, for non-exempt of permits.
Okay, 'cause that's, has that already been voted on, and now you're requesting that the, it be, um, the code be changed?
Yes, it has to be added.
Okay, so, but was it voted on once before, or are we, uh, voting on that?
It was voted on that, no permits, but now I have to add language to the code.
Okay, so it's, it's been already voted on that the permits weren't required. Now she's just asking us to make sure that we are able to change the code to go with what?
We're saying, uh, seat containers, but we can't, we can't pull a vehicle in and out every day, 'cause then it constitutes a garage, and we have to have a permit on it, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Oh, I see, okay.
It's just, it's just, it, my opinion's nonsense. I mean, it's, obviously, it's, it's my opinion. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, but it's just, I don't wanna buy something that's pre-engineered and put it on my property, and then be told how to use it or have to pay to do that. And I just, you, you know, it's just.
Well, and part of the pre-engineering being, um, reviewed by the Building Department is make sure that it's pre-engineered to the design criteria of our area. The right snow load, the right wind speed, the right seismic, the right exposure.
How, how is this a problem?
What's that?
How is this a problem? I, I just.
Well, it's just like, if you wanted to, how the code is currently written, if you wanted to go buy a forty-foot seat container and put it on your property, you'd have to have it permitted. You'd have to buy a permit to put it on.
Well, not anymore. You guys voted.
Right. But now if you wanted to use that to pull your carly in and out every day, that'd be a violation of your, of your code, right?
It'd be considered a garage.
Yeah, exactly.
But now, but now you're telling my definition of what it is. Keith, did she have something?
I believe it was cleared up. It was cleared up. I was just trying to clear some things up. Commissioner Anshur did it. Thanks.
Okay, well.
So I guess I, I'm still, the, the wording is very, I don't, ambiguous or whatever. It's, it's, um, as it's, as it's agendized, um, not clear. I guess you just want us to give you direction to, um, put the language in the code that excludes this.
So I have a comment, and don't throw stones at me. If we were to, no, no, so if some, if I were to go and build a building that's the exact same size as the seat tainer and use it as a garage, I would have to permit it. So what is the difference if somebody's using that as a garage, that it's not permitted? Is that, did I say that correctly?
I don't know. It is, it is permitted.
I know that. That's what I'm saying. That's, we would require the permit if we built a stick building the same exact size as a seat tainer, and we drove in and out, we would require. So just because it's pre-made and it's being sat there and utilized as a garage, it should be considered a garage.
Well, permitting it because to, one thing, to ensure the safety of it, that they're not just putting up two poles, tie it in, blah, 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 and it gets over there and gets killed because their structure fall. That's one reason, correct?
Correct.
So that's my, that's my thing, is that you have these seat containers that are pre-engineered, you have these other buildings that, like, that, um, the furniture stores sell that are pre-engineered, they're built to sit. I mean, you can move them. It's a movable thing. It's like, if I wanted to move to California, I could put it on a trailer, and I could haul it to California. Why did it have to be permitted? Why do I have to pay and then be told how to use it? That's, that's my argument here. That's what I'm trying to clean up. That's what I'd like to see cleaned up. But again, I'm one opinion.
If you have a seat tainer and you store tools in there, your yard tools, and you go in and out every day, is that a garage now?
I don't know.
I mean, it, this is endless.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's.
What bothers me about these codes and these ordinances, I don't know how they originated. I've been told how they've originated, and, uh, you know, they just don't fit the situation here in Lander County.
Well, I think one, we stated, is it's a, it's a revenue stream for the county. And I can see if you were hurting, why you would wanna do that, but we're not. But then, so then we infringe on our citizens, I feel rights, and they say, okay, yeah, you can buy that, but we're gonna tell you how to use it now. And it's just, I just, I just.
Maybe in the case that we were hurting, I mean, say that we were in the, the luxury of receiving the net proceeds, and we were hurting like we have, had in the past, um, that would be something that the county generated a tax, uh, you know, some small tax off of. So I mean, it's kind of a, um, I don't know. Also, I'd hate to see that, you know, the, the people come in and have, you know, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten seat. Also, I'd hate to see that, you know, the, the people come in and have, you know, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten seatainers put on their property instead of building a structure, um, because I hate the pollution of property, but that's my own opinion. And I know that, that, you know.
It's your opinion.
Yeah, that's my, you know, my.
The Constitution states that a man's private property is his private property with that to do with. And then you get into the state ordinances and planning laws and zoning, so it's like, I mean, it's, I'm not, I'm not going that deep. I'm just saying, if I buy a building that's pre-engineered, I should be able to set it on my property and use it how I want to. That's all I'm saying.
Your property is your property as long as you don't have anything on it that's going to hurt anybody else. I mean, I don't want to see people come in by forty acres and then the next thing you know, they're, they're, uh, some kind of chemical plant and your neighbors are smelling all these fumes.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's an issue.
Okay, on, on the agenda right now is, is the language. Apparently, she wants us to change for the portable storage units and seatainers and conics boxes. Now, if you don't feel there's enough or if you'd like to discuss this more, instead of taking action, I think that's fine.
Well, I, I mean.
What would you like to do?
I, my, my thing is just, I mean, obviously, I'm one opinion and if we need to defer it, for everybody to think about it and maybe have some more, maybe photocopy some of our actual, what our ordinance states and we can read it and then.
It's not an ordinance. It's the IRC.
The IRC.
Yeah.
If, and then we want to tackle it, you know, and if we can make a more clear motion, then we can do that. I'm just, I'm saying that it just.
And I'm on a timeframe of getting the codes adopted by October.
The IS, for the ISO codes?
All of them.
All of them?
IDC, IRC, energy, electrical, fire.
The next meeting is September nineteenth. So, why do you have to have these all adopted by October?
Because we got audited by ISO, ISO and.
Who's ISO?
It's going to happen or we're going to be in violation.
Who's ISO?
Insurance Service Office. The, ISO is what sets our insurance rates for the county.
Okay.
So, if we, if we fail or are not in compliance with ISO, you're going to hear from just about every homeowner in the, in the town.
And we went from a four to a ten and ten is bad.
Ten is the lowest.
So, the, these codes are.
And because we were on the, because we're on the two thousand three cycle and Elko's in the same problem, so is Humboldt.
Could we get a copy of this report and go through it so that we can see exactly where we're deficient? I mean, that would have been a good backup.
So, basically, what the insurance company does is follows, uh, these guidelines. They're saying, as it's adopted and it's new, you will follow it. Otherwise, you're premium or we'll drop you.
That is correct. Sounds like the federal government to me.
Exactly. Well, I don't have a problem with making a motion to approve excluding these. Um, like I said, I, I, I don't have a problem with, with the motion. If you guys want to discuss it further, um, we can read it back, but.
I don't like the verbiage of, of.
Well, we can, tell me what you want and we'll do that, but I just need to get this.
Yes, I just don't think that if I want to put a seat container on my property or, or a, a pre-engineered portable building, that I should be told how to use it. It should be mine to use it how I want to use it.
What's the size restriction on the portable buildings?
That's what I was just going to say. If, if you give us a square footage.
Well, whatever, whatever size is, I mean, there's a certain size and you go beyond and they can't move it. It's not, I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's like.
Right, but I mean, those portable that you're referring to, some of those are six hundred square feet, I think.
Yeah, the largest is hundred and forty.
Six forties.
Six forty, how long would that be? Because your standard.
That's what a forty-foot seat container is, right? It's six forty. That's twenty foot three twenty or, uh, no, no, it's double what a forty is.
If you go fifty-three by eight feet wide.
Right.
That's four hundred and twenty-four square feet. Floor. We've actually got two things here. The, the one thing is to let her do the language that we've already approved to exempt these two things.
That's fine. I see where you're going.
That's one. That's where we are, okay. The other one that you're saying, and I understand where you're coming from, um, we did a big one. We had to provide the engineering plans, the whole thing, and yes, it's permanent. We concreted it because that's what we had to do. But it came in on a truck and now I can't take it out on a truck.
Right, well, that's saying that.
But that's a whole different thing and we'd have to change definitions. You'd have to change building sizes. I don't think we're going there today. So, you want to just tackle this one?
Yeah, so I'm fine with that. We can approve this verbiage and then we can put it back on a future agenda for looking at the verbiage of it and seeing what the appetite is for the commission.
And we can adjust the square footage if you want something, anything less than five hundred square, as an example.
Right.
Five hundred square feet is non-permitted as long as it's pre-engineered, um, or portable. Something like that. We can look at that.
So, we can get approved this so she can get her portion done and then we can come back.
So, make that motion and we approve. Excluding exempting portable storage units such as seatainers and conics boxes from the permit process where required, being required to be permitted.
I'll second.
That's what you wanted? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks.
Thank you all. We're now moving into agenda item number thirteen, correspondence. Correspondence reports potential upcoming agenda items.
Now, I, I would like to have an agenda item concerning, this is maybe an option more on, um, trending fads. Uh, there seems to be this fad of this Area fifty-one thing that it's laughable for us, but for Lincoln County, if they get five thousand people in Alamo and HEICO, they're out of food and they are out of fuel. And it was kind of interesting yesterday when I was reading through these articles that there is actually someone in HEICO that wants to start a Burning Man there, a small one. But a ten thousand, a ten thousand-person, uh, rock festival in HEICO. You know, do we need to be prepared for these things in the future? Are we going to have some kind of event in Lander County or Humboldt County, Eureka County? I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna have to stretch our, our resources in the state to accommodate people that are going to try to do something that's absolutely stupid. So, I, I mean, that's, you know, it's just something to think about and, and to discuss.
Okay, so you would like to discuss the trends of.
Yeah, the trends, the social trends.
What would you say of impacting events, large? Large events that could impact our county? I think that's something that probably also would fall under LPSI because it does create, you know, an emergency.
When I, when I talked to Ron about this yesterday, he said that this was, there, there was something tried in Smith Valley a few years ago and it, and it was shut down. So, do we have the mechanism to shut things down to accommodate these things, to be prepared for them? You know, five thousand people coming into Austin or to Eureka or Rachel, HEICO, Alamo, that's, that's not a good thing for the local people, so.
Just as, and, and so, you know, we, we do have a separate line item set up for emergency operations. So, we, when we can discuss all that, it can be put on an agenda to discuss what we would do in coordination with LPSI, the Sheriff's Department, local.
My idea of emergency funding is for the people of Lander County, not people from New York and Chicago and San, San Francisco that are coming here just for something to talk about, so.
We also, uh, I believe need Nevada Energy. I think they're, they're coming due, right?
We, Ted and I have a conference call with, um, Nevada Energy next week to discuss the franchise agreement and it will be on the September nineteenth, uh, agenda.
So, um, Keith's evaluation.
Another thing is I would like to have just discussed the possible action verbiage of.
You want that on the next one?
Yeah, because we have plenty of time. We have, it's almost a thirty-day window to get whatever she needs to get to present it to us. Because I would like to clear up the language and the use of portable things, right?
Structures.
Structures, however, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Yes.
If, uh, you plan on putting Keith's evaluation on the next one, then I would ask you to please direct me or ask me to give him the required notification, my associate.
It's ten days, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, yes, then we will, um.
Request.
Uh, we will, uh, we will direct our legal counsel to give the proper notice to our county manager for the evaluation.
Thank you.
Or do you want to waive it, Keith?
I, I can waive it. It is, it's no difference to me.
Yeah, but I, I'm going to have to prepare something for that too, a waiver. If, if, e- either way, it's better if you. Ask me to, you know, to, to do the paperwork.
Take care of it, yes.
Yeah.
Whatever is required.
Handle it, handle it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, at the last meeting, I had mentioned something on the agenda regarding, um, verbiage in our county code. And I didn't, I kind of expected it on this meeting and it wasn't, so.
I just need to know how you want it in an agenda request and I will add it. What you're looking at doing. Or we can sit and talk about it. I have an idea, but I'm not completely clear on what you're looking at.
Okay, on the agenda item for Commissioner Allen, you get with our county manager and get the wording on that one, okay? If there's nothing else, I'll move into public comment. This is for non-agenda item only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments of the direction of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner. A public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Any public comment, yes?
I did forget something in my update that I wanted to make, uh, the commissioners aware of. Um, it's, at our rec center, we're being, going to be doing an upgrade, uh, to the UV system. We're actually going to be installing a UV system to work, to keep the water clear and, and clean. So, the, that'll require a shutdown. We've been working on this for, for several months now. But it'll actually require the, uh, uh, rec center to be shut down September third through the twenty-seventh to make this installation. It's being advertised and it's being publicized as, as much as, as can be done. So, it'll be a three-day shutdown. And then, during that relatively same period of time, September twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, we're, they're going to be redoing the gym floor and they're going to put an oil-based coating down on the floor at this, at this time, which is a stronger, harder shelled surface, similar to what's, what's in the schools, uh, gym floor. So, it's a no-scratch floor. And like I said, and once again, this is being advertised as well, um, that we, the gym will be closed for these days and the pool will be closed for these days. The rec center will be limited access to that.
So, we're actually shut down over the holiday?
No, it's after.
Afterwards.
It's the end of September, end of, end of September. And all, and this is just a coordination with the vendors that are going to be putting this in. So, this will fit into the best times.
Any other public comment? Okay, then just to remind you all to please stay. There is a litigation meeting afterwards. And with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion set and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What, what are the dates for the center to be here?
Um, next.